16, 23, 24, 30, and then we will come back and pick up 17. We will now move to number item 13 on our regular agenda. This is an item that has kept me awake for the last two weeks in particular, and has kept me without sleeping well for the last two, three months. So I'm ready to get this deal open and get it over with. The consideration, number 13, is consideration of authorizing funding and payment for the city's proportionate share of costs incurred for services pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the cities of Abilene, Midland, and San Angelo. It was effective on April the 9th, 2011. It was referred to as the West Texas Water Partnership. And consideration of ratifying all actions already taken and payments made pursuant to said interlocal agreement since its effective date and any action in connection thereto. I ask that this be placed on the agenda. I ask that this be placed on the agenda at the meeting September the 3rd. We have been dealing with this issue. Charlotte has been dealing with it, she says, since January or February. I was made aware of this in the middle of June, right before I took office, right before I took this seat, and four new council members were seated. When Charlotte reported it to me, we reported it to the city council as it grew. We then reported it to the city administration. The city administration then was told that we wanted an investigation. We wanted to know what happened, why it happened, and want to be sure that it never happened again. And I will, right now at this time, say that I am very proud of Charlotte Farmer, and I applaud her for discovering this and for bringing it forward and bringing it to the public, to the recognition of the public. We told the staff at this time that we wanted this investigated, and we wanted it investigated fully. The investigation was complete on the 3rd day of September this month. We had an executive session at this time. We had a lawyer and a consultant that had been involved with this from the very beginning. And they spent a lot of time going over what had happened, the monies that had been spent, what the monies were spent for, and gave us a timetable ever since April of 2011, bringing us up to date, so that our council would have a full understanding and be able to make a wise decision on this. It took about two and a half hours to do this executive session. It has been my practice since I have been mayor that when we go into an executive session at noon, that we tell the people that are waiting when we will be back and when the meeting will restart, because there's always people waiting that want to approach council and have items on the agenda. When we left at, right at noon on the 3rd of September, I said we will be back and gave a time. When we got into the meeting upstairs, we realized we were not going to be able to get back at the time I told them. So when the time came, I came back home to the floor and I said, "We're not through. We need another 30 minutes." I went back to executive and we continued our meeting. At the end of that 30 minutes, we were not through with our discussion, but I said, "We're going back to the floor because people are waiting for us." And we came back and reopened our regular agenda, and we took care of the regular business that we had. At which time, I made an announcement. We are not through in executive. After the regular meeting, we will go back into executive and we will conclude our executive meeting. And then we will come back to the floor and we will give you the results of our decision. When the regular meeting was over, we went back into executive. Six of us went back into executive. And six of us waited for about five minutes. One member, Mrs. Farmer, did not show up. Mrs. Farmer did not go to executive. Mrs. Farmer left the building. And we sent Michael Dane to look for her. He went down and they said Charlotte Farmer has left the building. Charlotte Farmer did not attend the executive meeting to discuss the matter that she had brought up and that we had investigated and brought consultants in to discuss. There were six of us there, that is a quarter. So we went ahead and by a consensus of council members, we decided that we were ready to accept the investigation that Daniel had made and a separate auditor had made, and that we were willing to bring it to the floor and to the public. Because Ms. Farmer was still not here, we did not want to discuss it on the 3rd. So I made the statement from this podium. We will be back on the 17th of September, at which time I want it on the agenda as a regular agenda item that we will discuss and fully disclose and answer any questions. And we will answer the questions and explain the investigation that was made. And Mrs. Ramirez put this on the agenda at that time. I think it was about four or five days later. This came out in the first draft, and this item was on there. We said that we would deal with this today, September the 17th. It was on the agenda. It was planned. This was a consensus of the council. But Charlotte Farmer was not satisfied with waiting until today to handle this. And Charlotte Farmer wrote a memorandum, and she made this public on September the 11th. This went out to the news media. It went out to the Standard Times. It went out to the television stations. It went out to the radio stations. And that's fine. That's fine. This will embarrass me. It will embarrass this council. It will embarrass Daniel. But we can live with embarrassment. I asked for this job, and I worked hard to get this job. And I'm a plenty big boy. I can take a little embarrassment, and that doesn't bother me. Daniel's a big boy as well. He gets paid well to take this. And Daniel can take the embarrassment. It frustrates me that this council, though, is faced with the embarrassment, four of them which were not even on the council in April of 2011. But every one of these guys asked for this job, so they can take embarrassment. But let me tell you where it got serious, my friends. It also went to the Attorney General of the State of Texas. This was also sent to the Texas Municipal League, which we are a city member in the State of Texas. This also went to the county attorney in the county of Tom Green. This opens not only up something that is embarrassing to us, but this puts you, as a citizen of San Angelo, in a very serious situation. Because this opens every citizen up in this town to litigation from state lawsuits that could tie us up for months and months and years and cost you untold amounts of money to defend ourselves. This has gone past embarrassment. This has gone into the realm of... This concerns me. This concerns the majority of our council. This has gone beyond embarrassment. And Daniel, I'm going to turn this over to you right now because I don't say anything that I would surrender. So Daniel, if you would, please take it.
Thank you, Mayor. What I want to do actually is go back to, as far as the investigation itself, and to give you kind of a basis for what was happening, what happened, and make sure that we have a good understanding. We had a, the city council had a meeting back in March 26th, 2011, to discuss the Tri-Cities partnership. Now, this is a partnership between the city of San Angelo, the city of Midland, and the city of Abilene. The discussion, really, the group came together to discuss the possibility of partnering to come up with possible long-term water solutions for all three cities, and also for what all of West Texas. The initial meetings went well. So on March 26th, 2011, the previous city manager, Harold Dominguez, and Water Intelligence Director, Will Wilkie, did a presentation to the city council. The city council listened to the presentation on March 26th, 2011. They did like what they heard and decided to move forward with this partnership. What was decided was that the city would partner up with the other two cities and split the expenditures three ways. However, the city council also stipulated that there should be, an amount of $100,000 should be spent on this project initially. Looking at video from that meeting, it was understood also that any further spending, which I understood the city council to know that it was going to go beyond $100,000. However, if it went over $100,000, it should go back to the city council for approval of more money. On May the 20th of 2011, a previous city manager, actually, let me go back. The city manager was asked to negotiate this contract, and that's what he did. He also implemented the contract. This was on May the 20th, 2011. Now, the contract that was signed, and this was signed by three different city managers, one for the city of Abilene, one for the city of Midland, and one for the city of San Angelo. The agreement was signed, in the agreement, interlocal agreement between the three communities. It was decided in the agreement that the, of course, the city split the expenditures three ways. The one thing that was missing from the agreement was the $100,000 threshold that the city of San Angelo put in place. With that said, the contracts were signed. One signature was missing, and that was the signature of our city attorney. Typically, what we do on any contract that comes through the city, the city attorneys do review the contracts to ensure that what the city council decided was, is implemented and included in the contract also. In this case, the contract was not run up by our city attorney. It was run up by the Lloyd Gosmick, the attorneys that represent the three different communities in this partnership. So this was never reviewed by our city attorney. Therefore, the $100,000 stipulation really wasn't caught. It was just left without the stipulation other than the expenditures will be split three ways. The contract continued as such, and typically when, again, wants the city attorneys to do a review of contracts, in this case it didn't have to have a signature because there was no review by our city attorney. Typically, what happens after that, the purchasing division receives the information, typically from the director of that department who's responsible for the contract, and that there's a limitation on whatever the amount is as far as limitation, what have you, is also included in the form of a purchase order to not exceed a certain amount. In this case, this didn't happen because there was an amount stipulated in the contract. Moving forward with the contract itself, the city staff did implement the contract as stated. We moved forward. We received our initial bill on December 15th, 2011, for the amount of $43,259.72. Now, this is one-third of the amount. The other cities paid the exact same amount. San Angelo, I mean, Abilene and Midland paid the same amount. What ended up happening, though, because we didn't have those amounts, the amount of $100,000 indicated in the contract, we did have the $100,000 limit mandated by the city council surpassed on May 25th, 2012. At that time, we had paid an amount of $185,334.38. We had received another invoice of $62,527.38. And that's an amount that's pending payment, which brings the amount, the total amount owed, paid and owed, $247,861.76. Ms. Farmer and this mayor reported a little while ago. We are appreciative of the fact that Ms. Farmer did catch this. She was in Abilene at the time when she heard from one of the council members, I'm not sure which one, that the cities, about the cities, I guess, the amounts being spent and so forth. Ms. Farmer did come back and have a meeting, a visit with me also, initially, I believe, back in February. So we started discussions at that point. She had requested to review invoices and so forth. Because we do have an agreement with the three cities, and this is a confidential agreement. And the reason why confidential is because we are seeking water sources outside of our community. Some of these can be very controversial. We're trying to make sure that everything that we do in providing water for the city long-term, moving out and going out, that we do keep it confidential because of the disputes the mayor rubbed in those areas where we're looking for water. So at that point, Ms. Farmer and I had started discussing this. She started discussing with the staff, with Mr. Dane also. As far as the invoices, our concern, of course, was, from a confidential standpoint, we don't have an issue with council member coming in and reviewing those invoices as long as they do it in-house at City Hall. They can't leave City Hall because of its confidential nature, and that was expressed. I know that in listening to the allegations or reading allegations in the memo that was submitted to us, it was alleged that the city was trying to cover up these expenditures. I will tell you right now that as far as everything that happened, this happened a good 17 months before I showed up here as a city manager. There's no reason for me to want to cover up anything whatsoever. There's nothing to hide whatsoever. I was concerned that I was alleged. But again, from my standpoint and as far as my integrity, I would never do anything that would concern any type of cover-up whatsoever. But in this matter, it was alleged that we were trying to cover up these expenditures. And that wasn't the case. Again, as I mentioned, there's no reason for me not having been involved from the very beginning to try to cover anything up. All I was trying to do was to make sure that as far as investigating this situation, that I was thorough and that I was fair with all parties involved to determine exactly who was at fault, if anyone was at fault. And looking back as far as the beginning of this whole investigation, it just started from the very beginning. We do have procedures in place, as I mentioned a while ago, to make sure that we catch an amount that's about to go over. As I mentioned again, that we had had a P.O. system in place with the $100,000 maximum. That would have been caught in red flag, and we would have surpassed that amount. Again, the intention of the current staff that we have in place at this point, I see, no, I can't point the finger at anyone and say, "You were at fault. Why didn't you catch this?" This should have been caught from the very beginning. And for that, we do apologize to our citizens because we tried our very best to make sure that every contract that comes through here, that we're very thorough in reviewing it and making sure that it's implemented the way it's supposed to be implemented. Now, mind you, we look at hundreds, thousands of contracts. And we try our very best to make sure that we do every single one of those correctly. This one, unfortunately, did not go as planned. And because of that, we did have an expenditure that went above an amount that shouldn't have gone above. Again, $185,000 was paid out. Once we discovered the $100,000 limitation, we had put a hold on the $62,000 that I mentioned to you in order for us to bring this to the city council to get their approval moving forward as far as how this would be paid. I do want to express that as far as the West Texas Water Partnership, it started off with the Tri-Cities. The effort itself was supported by the city council. And speaking to a previous elected official who's no longer here, he did express that he felt that, of course, if there was an issue, he would have understood that there was a $100,000 limitation. He would have very easily brought this back and discussed this with the city council. He felt that that would have been an issue as far as getting more approval. Again, the spirit and the intent of the city council was to move forward with the West Texas Water Partnership. There was an understanding that, yes, $100,000 was a limitation, but from viewing the video, it was understood that it would surpass that amount also. I don't see any wrongdoing, to be honest with you, as far as from anyone from this current staff. Again, it's unfortunate. We do, and I do want to tell you that the West Texas Water Partnership is a partnership that I do hope that we can continue with. This group affords us a wonderful opportunity to share expenditures, share our costs and our resources of two other cities that normally we would have to take on ourselves. There would be two costs per city of San Angelo. Also gives us a bigger voice. With three different cities combined, it's over 200,000 population with more senators and more representatives in that group that gives a louder voice there at the state capitol. The resources and the voice that we have also for lobbying, promoting for this area, for me, is really well worth the opportunity of continuing all this partnership. We do agree that as far as the amounts that will be spent and moving forward, we will have to invest some money at this point to make sure that we invest in the long-term water supply. I know that our concern is that we're not just trying to address the water for us at this point and make sure that we are addressing water for our kids and also our grandkids moving forward. We know that the regional F group, as far as doing a research and determining how much water this city would need, had determined that by 2060, we'd be short of about $32,000 per unit of water. So we have to do anything we possibly can to address our future water needs. Again, it's very unfortunate, and I'm very saddened and upset that this actually happened. What we're trying to do is just correct it and move forward and make sure that we continue on addressing our long-term water needs. I will express to you our apologies to our citizens for this happening. We want to make sure that we address it and make sure that moving forward, that this isn't happening again. Again, the intent wasn't there. Again, I investigated myself. We had our internal auditor take a look at this also, and we came to the same conclusion. So again, that's just a quick overview on my part as far as what was done. And again, we thank you and we apologize to you also.
I would further like to add that when this was brought forward to the council in April the 11th, I was on the council, Johnny Silas was on the council, and Charlotte Farmer was on the council. And when this was brought forward to us, we knew at that time from the executive that this would be a, several, there would be several steps to this. When you are looking for water in West Texas in a drought, you don't want everybody in the world to know what you're doing. It was important that we have a confidential ability to go out and seek this water. Had this been brought back to the council, knowing that it was just a start, that there would be much, many, many more dollars involved, had this been brought back to the council, I would have voted to approve it. I don't speak for Mr. Silas, but Mr. Silas, would you have voted to approve it?
You know, I know I would have because I know that the dire straits over yonder. I mean, we're begging for water all across the state. So, I mean, citizens have always asked us, "Well, is that all we're doing right now as a hickory?" We're, "No, there's other things we're doing." We can't just depend on the hickory that's taken closer to 40 years to get here. So I had no problem building forward.
And I will also add that in the memorandum that Mrs. Farmer sent out, she wrote in there in parentheses, "I am in favor of the West Texas Water Partnership." So I feel that Mrs. Farmer, since she said she was in favor of it in writing, would have voted for it. I also feel assured that the mayor, who was the one that we had, that had given the confidential authority to go out and seek water, would have voted for this. It is my opinion that had this been brought back, it probably would have been in a consent agenda. Because every member of our council knew that this was a staged deal, knew that this would take money, and knew the importance of finding water. So I just throw that out there. I'm sorry it happened. I wish it would not have happened. I certainly wish this hadn't come up on my watch. But we had promised honesty and openness and transparency, and I had this put on the agenda for full discussion because we do not shove things under the rug. This happened with a previous city manager, with a previous mayor, and with a previous water director. All of those have now changed, as has four of the seven members of this council. So I throw that out, and I'm going to open it up for discussion. I know Ms. Farmer wants to say something.
I need to ask a question first for clarification as an attorney. I want to talk to Mr. Valenzuela because we need to make sure what we're discussing here and what action is proposed to be taken.
Do you give the floor to Ms. Wardlaw? Go ahead.
I want clarification as an attorney because I think that item 13 is ambiguous, and I don't know what it means. I want clarification of this so when we're arguing about this, commenting on it, we know where we're going, where we're trying to go. I think the public needs to know that I have three different agendas here, two amended agendas, and one final agenda. And the first two agendas just said, "Consideration of matters related to West Texas Partnership." Then on Friday, at the last minute, we get the final agenda which has considerable language on here. Not only considering the West Texas Partnership, but authorizing funding and payment of the city's proportionate share of costs incurred for services pursuant to the interlocal agreement. I don't know whether that talks about the funding in the past or whether that authorizes consideration of continuing funding even though we don't know what it is. And even though they're talking about now, a new stage two that I'm not familiar with, it would be $3 million, in the range of $3 million they want us to participate in. And I don't know whether that's ratifying that or not, but the language continues as expanded and it says, "And in consideration of ratifying all actions taken." "All actions taken." I want to know what that means. I assume that's actions taken by the staff. And then it also added additional language and made pursuant to the interlocal agreement since its effective date, and any actions in connection thereto. This is very broad and very general, and I don't know what it means. And there's a lot of stuff that has not been brought out in the first two speeches. We'll get to that in a minute. But the thing I want to point out is, in Charlotte Farmer's letter to the council and everybody else, she points out that there are four minutes that she came across the meetings that appear to have been modified just within the last relatively few days, have to do with minutes that go back a year or so, and they're set out, the dates are set out in the letter. And she cannot understand why, and I can't understand why there would be current modifications of the minutes that go back over a year in time, just in recent days. And one was even shown to be modified on Sunday night, if our information is correct. And Mr. Morrison has requested that we audit the water department many times, and I think we need to get to the bottom of whether or not these minutes were audited. If this isn't such a big deal, why are they asking that all the actions of the staff be ratified? And this was a continuing problem. It wouldn't have, it would not have stopped. Mr. Farmer had to blow the whistle on it and discover it. And it is a serious matter, and I do feel like there is, there is not a cover-up because Ms. Farmer uncovered it, but there is. What's trying to be done here is they're trying to take this continuing problem we had and minimize it to make sure that it's not a big deal in the eyes of the public. And I just don't think that's the case. But I want to know from Mr. Valenzuela, first of all, who was all, participated in the redraft of item 13 on the agenda? All persons.
The participants as far as the draft, and again, as far as changes being made on Fridays and Saturdays, very often, sir. This is something that isn't something that's unusual.
I'm just asking you to say it.
Yes, sir, let me get to that, please. As far as the wording, I wanted to make sure that the wording was proper and make sure we addressed the previous expenditures. Make sure that moving forward, we address the amounts that need to be paid. Involved in this were Ms. Bowing. I asked Michael Dane also, because I was out on a different meeting at that time, to go ahead and move forward and skip the wording down. He called me and let me know, and I was good with that. So again, there is nothing there as far as, I'm not sure what you're trying to imply, but there's nothing there other than we're just trying to make sure that the monies that have been spent at this point, that we do ratify it and make sure we take care of that expenditure which is in the contract. And moving forward and make sure that we do have an amount that we're addressing if in fact we do move forward with the West Texas Water Partnership. And this is what this is all about. As far as the minutes being modified, the insinuation, and I'm sure I know where this is going, I have nothing to do with minutes, quite frankly. You know, that's something that, at this point, I'd like to have Ms. Bisha go ahead and address that as far as the modifications and why the modifications are made.
There is no insinuation. It just doesn't look good, and I think we're entitled to have an explanation of what's going on here since this is an important matter. And, you know, we can have those presented to us today, the before and the after minutes of these four, or we can postpone that to the next council meeting. But I'm sure you know that tampering with a government document is a felony.
I sure do, sir. I sure would never do that.
And I'll tell you, the district attorney's office is not as cavalier about what's going on as some that have just spoken. And let me tell you, the reason it's even more egregious is because of furniture gate right before that, when it hit the fan and a $100,000 check was written without the proper safeguards and accounting procedures, and there were memorandums floating around, and everybody agreed that this would never happen again. And lo and behold, shortly thereafter, we're back on the same program with all of these large expenditures. And to make it even worse, what the people and citizens need to understand is this would have continued on indefinitely if Mr. Farmer had not had the presence of mind to dig into this and find out about it. And as I said, there's talk of a new phase two that I wasn't even aware of, that they're saying is going to cost $3 million, which they want us to pay $1 million of. And so it just hadn't been caught. It's obvious to assume that logical to be assumed that we just continue to pay all those invoices without any city council approval, and those would have been improper also.
Mr. Wardlaw?
Since you're bringing up the allegation of the minutes were changed, can I hear from Ms. Ramirez to see what her response is?
In regards to the minutes, I checked the history of the minutes back to the packets. I did not find a modified date. All the dates were within a couple of weeks. And if there are any modifications, they are administratively in nature only. If it's a substantial change, we will have to bring it back to council for them to review and approve again.
And we can definitely audit that and make sure that if there was any major changes from back when to now, that we can address that. And I don't have, I mean... And I don't have... I mean, in fact, we'll go and do that, just to make sure that you can see that there was nothing there.
Those are a year ago, is that?
Yes, sir.
And then, would you also address furniture gate?
Yes, sir. I sure would. As far as...
Let's let Mr. Valenzuela. You have asked questions. Let's let him answer, please.
I was going to continue with my question.
Let's let him answer the questions you have asked him. We'll let Alicia answer. I would like him to answer the allegation about furniture gate, and then we'll allow you to speak again.
Furniture gate, this actually occurred in October of two thousand and twelve, which unfortunately was my first meeting here at City Hall. You know, I was introduced this way. What happened, as far as the agreement, was a good seventeen months prior to that. So, you're making it sound like furniture gate happened, and this happened. You know, the agreement actually happened seventeen months before furniture gate. I actually hate the use of that word. But as far as the contract and what that was, we did have a department that overspent and didn't use the P.O. system properly. This was a totally different situation from an actual contract. It was approved by the city council. So, you're comparing that to what's already here, on an issue that actually happened prior to the furniture issue. Again, moving, as I explained to you, as far as procedure to be followed with a contract was not followed, which is why this fell through cracks. As far as furniture, the furniture issue, that's been addressed, and at this point, that's an issue at this point that we monitor on a daily basis. These are two totally different issues. These have nothing in common, and one happened way before the other one. This one, what we're discussing at this point, happened a little before furniture, the furniture issue.
May I ask my question, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, are you saying if a motion is made, Item thirteen, it will not be authorizing any additional payment past the sixty-three thousand dollar check that is sitting there on your desk right now?
Mayor?
We have some financial information, both looking back at what we would be authorizing and looking forward, that is available when you're ready to hear about.
We want to pay that an amount at this point, the amount that's sitting there. We definitely want to make sure that the eighty-five thousand went above, that we do get approval by the council, to make sure that that amount is ratified. As a matter of fact, that amount has already been paid at this point above the one hundred thousand, that that's ratified, because it is something that does need to be paid, to a consortium agreement. Also, the amount that came in, the sixty-two thousand, also do need to... We do need to address that also, which is why it's worded this way, as far as ratifying those amounts. And then, of course, discussion moving forward, to make sure that we address future funding if we continue with this partnership.
You're saying that we would address future expenditures at a later date? You're not saying we're giving a blanket authorization for future expenditure by approval of this motion?
We have any action in connection there, too. Basically, what we're saying at this point is we're addressing the past payments.
Right. Past four payment. Okay. And that's all it is at this time, okay?
Mayor?
You will have the opportunity to address future payments if you choose. And any future participation that we have with West Texas Partnership, we also can consider. This is just to take care of money that has already been spent, according to the contract that we signed in April the eleventh, that we would be, share one-third of the costs with Abilene and San Angelo. That's what this is.
Yes, sir.
And that's very plain. Already action, already taken, and payments made pursuant to the interlocal agreement, which was April the eleventh.
Yes, sir. But you will also have... We added this language so that you would have the opportunity to direct staff for future activity, so that there be clarity at this point, moving forward, what future commitment the council wanted paid.
Then I think we need to divide this into two different sections. We will divide it. One section is to honor our contract that we made in April of eleven, and then we will have a second action, which will consider whether or not we remain part of the West Texas Water Partnership. So, we'll do this in two.
Ms. Bowlin, would you please...
Advise, ma'am, please advise.
Make sure we're around the party.
Well, you can do exactly what you said.
I would like to do it that way, so that everyone is perfectly clear on what we're doing. We are honoring the contract that we made in April of eleven, that we honor this as a one-third of the partnership, and then we will make another separate item to determine whether or not we remain in the West Texas Partnership. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Clarification. Are you not talking about today?
I'm talking about today, if the council wants to do it today. That is dependent upon a majority of this council.
I do not want to do that today. Go ahead, Charlotte.
Okay. Are you ready for the floor? You've got it.
Since I've been named and tossed around and thrown out with the wash that the baby put back in, but first of all, I want to apologize to the citizens of San Angelo for this oversight, for this payment that was not authorized by council. There indeed, as everybody has agreed...